Good evening friends, welcome to session number six in our study of Daniel revival. Tonight, we're gonna continue on the section on Daniel seven. Because there was some points that I wanted to continue to address out of the book of Daniel. Now, Daniel, I've said it many times, very important book, and very important we understand the book of Daniel. So, if you want to have your bibles open to chapter seven. Now, I did not write out a sheet tonight, what I did was I printed out some information. And the information I'm printing out has to do with the church, the religious institution, political institution, that came through the Middle Ages. And why am I talking about this institution? Because it holds such a prominent place in Bible prophecy. The institution I'm talking about is the papal system. Now, I'm gonna say it again, you're tired of hearing it. We're not talking about modern Roman Catholics today, I have many good friends who are in that religion. And we're politically correct here, we're not gonna, we're not back here to bash somebody's religion, okay? But, when you get into Daniel, you get into Revelation, you discover that the system, the papal system, answers to much of the prophecy that's laid out in there. So, but rather than write out a sheet, I did some photocopying today, on your photocopy machine, alright? And tonight, we're gonna focus on nine characteristics out of the book of Daniel that demonstrate the Roman Catholic Church being the beast that's described in Daniel seven, okay? And again, it's not to pick on Catholic people, certainly not today's Catholic people. Are we short?
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, she don't either. I have an extra one if we need it, okay? Careful lady. Yeah, she tried to take a nap during my presentation. Ta-da! Welcome Regina. And welcome folks watching on Facebook, glad that you could join us tonight. But, we've been talking about Daniel seven. Before we begin, I wanna just ask that we offer a word of prayer. Love you Father in heaven, we thank you so much again for the book of Daniel. We pray Lord that you give us discernment, enlightenment. We pray Lord that this book would change our lives and help us to enjoy and experience the revival that comes from studying this all-important book. Bless us tonight Lord, we pray, in Jesus's name, amen. Daniel seven, if you go back to the beginning, remember, it's a series of images, beast figures, ferocious beast figures, that have to do with the empires, the kingdoms that came on the scene during and after the time of Daniel. It takes us down to the time of the end, alright? And each of these beasts representing the four empires from the time of Daniel. Can anybody name those four empires?
Babylon.
Babylon's one?
Medo-Persia.
Medo-Persia?
Greece.
Greece?
And Rome.
And Rome. Okay, you have just earned favorite student. Yeah. Didn't even have to get your teacher now. Okay. But, the one that we focus on is the fourth beast. Because the fourth beast takes out some characteristics that the other beast don't have. Now, of course, the fourth beast, and you can read about that, we talked about it plenty in the last couple nights. The fourth beast is huge, is ugly, is nondescript, has iron teeth, iron hooves, iron feet, iron nails. And it is different from all the other beasts, because it has a different quality about it. We find out it's not just a pagan beast, it's not just a secular worldly beast, but it's also a religious power, okay? And so, what I did was, in identifying this beast, I pulled off my shelf a book by Kenneth Cox. Okay, now he's, you know Kenneth Cox? Yeah. He's a, you have this one too. I'll bet you, I got one book you don't have. The Sabbath and Scripture in History. Looking to cry. I was gonna get it for you, but they didn't have it in stock yet.
Oh, thank you.
Maybe someday. Maybe. Yeah. But what I wanna do is focus on the reasons why Daniel seven pinpoints the papal system, alright? As, some would call it the Antichrist, I hate to use that kind of terminology. But, as the prophetic image, the prophetic entity that comes out of the Roman Empire and exists down through the Middle Ages, and is still in existence today. But has a new front, you know, and again, you know, when you, you think of Catholicism today, you think of the Catholic charities, you think of some of the wonderful things they've done, some of the wonderful arts, some of the wonderful music. In fact, that sometimes, when we lived up in New York, Wendy and I would go to this great big Catholic cathedral. Just go in there and look at the artwork, you know, just, 'cause it was fine. And I, sometimes I would sit and kind of meditate on it, you know? So, we're talking about this entity, this agency, this system that was developed in the early Middle Ages, that set the standard, set the tone for the rest of the Christian religious world through much of the Middle Ages and into modern times. So, I have my little sheet here, you should have a bigger sheet. Put that in your hand, okay? Since I spent all this time getting it copied and wearing out the copy machine, what are you doing? Alright, pagan and papal Rome. And that's the two sections we're gonna divide this up into, papal, pagan and papal Rome. Now, what do we mean by pagan? For centuries, the Romans had worshipped a multiplicity of gods. They had a pantheon of gods such as Jupiter and Mercury and Apollo. They had borrowed many of these gods from the Greeks who they had conquered. They had conquered Greece, but Greece culturally had conquered Rome. Because Romans, many Romans were not only speaking Latin, but also the Greek language, and much of Greek culture, and art and mythology. And so, they worshipped the Greek gods, many of them, and they changed their names, alright? Jupiter, you know, he was the Greek, the king of the gods. What was he called in Greece? Zeus, right? Hera, became the queen of the gods to the Romans. Okay, that was under pagan Rome. But, at the time, eventually pagan Rome became papal Rome. And we talked about that last time we were together. But we're gonna talk about how we connect this with Daniel chapter seven. And what I wanna do first is go to the latter part of Daniel seven. And it's kind of like the second part, verse nineteen. I wanna go to Daniel seven nineteen, and it says, this is what it says. "Then I wished to know the truth about the fourth beast," that was the one that Daniel had his, had his attention on, "which was different from all the others, exceedingly dreadful, with his teeth of iron and nails of bronze, which devoured broken pieces, trampled the residue with his feet, and the ten horns that were on his head, and the other horn which came up before which three, before which three fell, namely the horn which had eyes and a mouth that spoke pompous words, great words, whose appearance was greater than his fellows. I was watching, and the same horn was making war against the saints, prevailing against them, until the Ancient of Days came." We came, we came far enough to talk about the judgment scene taking place, where the Ancient of Days sits on his throne, and the Son of Man approaches the Ancient of Days and receives favor in the judgment, which he passes on to us, okay, his saints. We pass in the judgment, because Jesus, the Son of Man, has stood in our place. Judgment made in the favor of the, favor of the saints of the Most High, and the time came for the saints to possess the kingdom, okay? That happens at the Second Coming. Thus he said, "The fourth beast will be a fourth kingdom on earth, which shall be different," or diverse, the old King James says, "different from all the other kingdoms, and shall devour the whole earth." Now, how much of the earth are we talking about? The known world, in those days. You know, we're not talking about China and Japan and places like that. Although, that system does have influence in virtually every country in the world, okay? Trampled it to pieces, break it, trampled it to pieces. The ten horns, he says, are ten kings, who shall arise from this kingdom, and another shall arise after them. They shall be different from the first ones, shall subdue three kings. Did we talk about the three kings that got subdued before this little horn? I know we did, I know we did, I'm just testing you. Anybody remember what these three kingdoms were called?
Vandals, Ostrogoths, and...
Who, what? The Hairyly?
Yeah.
The Vandals? And thirdly, the Ostrogoths. When did the Ostrogoths get conquered?
Five thirty-eight.
Five thirty-eight? I'll give this student an A, okay? She's paying attention.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, we were just, we were just talking about these things before the rescue showed up, so, yeah, a head start. Five thirty-eight, which begins this twelve-hundred-and-sixty-year period dominated by the papacy. That ends when? Anybody know? Seventy ninety-eight. Which is the beginning point of what we call the time of the end, okay? And a few years after that, we have this other important date, eighteen forty-four, which we haven't touched on yet, okay? But, here's what it says. Verse twenty-four, "The ten horns are ten kings who will arise from this kingdom. Another shall arise after it. He shall be different from the first ones, and he shall subdue these three kings that we just talked about." And, verse twenty-five, "He will speak pompous or great words against the Most High, shall persecute whereout," okay, in the King James, "the saints of the Most High, shall intend to change times and laws. Then the saints will be given into his hand," for, there's this time period, time, times, half a time. It's pretty thick, doesn't it there Doug? It gets pretty heavy. Yeah. We'll try to unpack it as we go along, okay? Alright, and we're gonna stop right there, for the time being. He talks about the court being seated, and he talks again about the greatness of the kingdoms under the whole heavens. He'll be given to the people of the saints of the Most High, okay? So, the saints are the ones who benefit in the judgment, okay? So, take this piece of paper, these sheets that I handed out. And our author, Kenneth Cox, gives us nine descriptions of this little horn. Nine descriptions by which we can pinpoint exactly, in the point of prophecy, how history fulfills prophecy, who is this little horn, okay? Now, we've identified the beast from which these all ten horns come forth, right? The beast coming on the heels of the Greek empire, it's the Roman empire. This Roman empire represented, represented by this beast. And this beast grows ten horns, which are described as the kingdoms that come out of the Roman empire. What are these kingdoms today? Oh, France and Germany and Switzerland, you know, Great Britain and Portugal and Spain, you know, the European kingdoms, okay? Because Europe is the center, for the Middle Ages especially, of Christianity. You know, we're not talking about China and Japan and India, we're talking about where Christianity exists, okay? So, he gives us nine points by which we can identify this little horn that grows up out of the midst of the ten, okay? First point, comes up among them, alright? Now, you have to try to visualize, try to imagine what Daniel was looking at. Daniel's looking at this beast, see these ten horns, and out of the midst comes this other horn. The first thing this horn does is destroy three of the other horns, okay? Follow, okay? And he's looking at this horn, it's different from all the other ones, it's got eyes like a man, it speaks great words, pompous words, you know, words of braggadocio, you know, making all kinds of claims for itself. So, it comes up among the other ten horns. Well, and then, first thing it does is plucks out three of them. Comes up among them. The ten horns were ten Germanic tribes called Goss, or barbarians, who conquered pagan Rome. They became the nations of Western Europe as Rome, that's the empire, fell apart due to the attacks of the barbarians, and they became, the horns became the nations of Western Europe, fulfilling Daniel's seven twenty-four, which states they would arise from this kingdom, which was pagan Rome. Daniel seven eight pictures the little horn that's coming up among the ten horns. The ten horns were already in existence. Rome, the empire, had already started to disintegrate into these various kingdoms. And in the midst of these kingdoms, this other religious, political agency comes up, okay? Papal Rome is the only power that fits this place, Western Europe and the time. Rome, most historians talk about the destruction of Rome four seventy-six eighty. Papal Rome was honest ascendancy, but going at kind of a slow pace until Rome was taken out of the way. And at five thirty-eight, with the last of the major enemies of the papal system, the Ostrogoths, five thirty-eight, that's when Rome was able to ascend up to the top, okay? Ascend in power to authority. Okay, that's the first point. Second point, it will arise after them. I alluded to them already, you know? He looks at the ten horns, he's looking at these ten horns, and then, after these ten, these other ten horns have risen out of the head of the beast, okay? That this other horn arises after them, alright? How are we doing so far? You have these, you have these to look at, but you get to take these home, wow! Isn't that cool? Aren't you glad you came tonight?
So, you're saying that the Roman empire had broken into ten kingdoms?
Essentially, let it was the process, it didn't happen overnight.
Right, but they had broken into the ten kingdoms of the Germans and the Spanish and the, and...
Yeah.
Then the Rome, the little Roman, uh...
Stages?
Or whatever, became more powerful, um, at the expense of three of those kingdoms.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's accurate to say. And we talked about this, one of our previous sessions, how the three kingdoms, they believed in a false teaching about the nature of Jesus. It was called Arianism. Remember we talked about that a few nights, if I don't think you may, may have been here? But, they had a false concept of who Jesus is. They believed that Jesus was not, you know, one with the Father, they didn't believe in the Trinitarian teaching like we teach today, but they believed that Jesus was a created being. That created a lot of controversy in those days. In fact, I alluded to this before, you know? You could go to the market to buy a loaf of bread, and they might ask you, "Was Jesus divine, or was he the first creation?" And if you gave the wrong answer, you could get punched in the mouth. That's how serious people took their religion in those days, okay? If you had that distinction in your religious belief, you, you know, battles were fought against. And that's how the Ostrogoths and these other kingdoms lost their prestige, lost their authority, lost their power, because they were fought, they were destroyed by the more Orthodox. When I say Orthodox, I mean, teaching the standard, teaching about the Trinity issue. They destroyed them, okay? Third point, different from the first ones. Uh, Daniel seven twenty-four says he will be different or diverse from the first ones. The other horns were simple horns that grew out of the head of the beast. The other horn that grew up in the midst of them, came up after them, and he was different. How was this horn different? It was not only a pagan, well, it was not a pagan horn represented, but it was a religious, political horn, it was different from the other ones. It carried out, it continued on, the essential teachings of Jesus, okay? They, they claimed authority given to them by Peter and Paul and other of the apostles, primarily Peter. They claimed that Peter was the, well, today they call him the first Pope, okay? Peter was crucified, we believe, upside down, upside the city of Rome. Paul was beheaded, and so, Rome, the city of Rome, had a lot of sentimental value to the Christian congregations, all spread out throughout the Roman Empire. And so, Rome gained an ascendancy, Rome gained more authority, more power, and it exploited that power over the rest of Christianity, Western Christianity in particular, okay? So, he was different because he was religious, okay? Because he had the veneer of Christianity attached to it. Now, when someone who claims to have all authority, all spiritual authority, uh, confronts you, and they tell you, "Well, if you don't pay a certain amount of money into my coffers, you're gonna burn in hell." That'd be a little frightening, wouldn't it? Now, if you are in an environment, in a culture where people don't have bibles, they can't study these things, they just have to take the Popes, the prelates, the bishops' word for everything, they can't study for themselves. And somebody's painting all these pictures of hellfire, "Oh, you should see some of the pictures they painted of people burning in hell during the Middle Ages. Oh, they exploited that false teaching." You know, in fact, that's where the false teaching of hell came from, you know? God's gonna burn you if you don't pay certain amount of money, if you don't do certain pilgrimage, if you don't do a certain number of Hail Marys, if you don't do a lot of things that the church puts upon you. And the Gospel of Jesus, the simple Gospel that Jesus left us with, was obstructed. It was covered over by the Dark Ages, by the teaching of falsehood, by the teaching of salvation, by works and penances, and all the things that were attached to this church in the Middle Ages. It was a religious system, but it was a false religious system, okay? It was a counterfeit to true Christianity. So, it was different from the first ones. Fourth point, it subdued these three, subdued three kings. We talked about that, you know, those three kingdoms that were subdued. Now, I'm gonna just read a portion of this. Justinian, who was the emperor of Rome at this time, he saw his empire being taken away by the Goss, who had overrun the kingdom. When we're talking about the Goss, we're talking about the Visigoths, which were the Western Goss, the Ostrogoths, which were the Eastern Goss. These, these made up largely the Germanic nations that continued to attack Rome. And so, they were subdued by the Catholic Church. They, here's what it says here. "Three tribes, the Hairyly, the Vandals, and the Ostrogoths had accepted a belief called Arianism, which taught that Jesus Christ was a created being, therefore not divine." The Catholic Church opposes this view. Hey, they got it right. Okay, Catholic Church got it right. Now, now they taught other things that we can't agree with, because they're not biblical. But, that caused a lot of conflict within the early church. "Since Justinian, this emperor of Rome at the time, had resolved to purge the Church of that heresy, he joined forces with the Catholic Church to destroy these three tribes." Three of the first horns were plucked up out of the roots, okay? Well, it goes on and talks about some of the other kingdoms that came out of the... But, you can take this home and read this on your time. Fifth point, had eyes like the eyes of a man, showing intelligence, showing human capability. Barbarians were generally illiterate. In contrast, the cunning foresight, subtrite and secret diplomacy of the papacy, especially the Jesuits. You heard of the Jesuits? They were kind of like shock troops in the Christian church. This man named Ignatius Loyola. You know, he'd been a veteran in combat and war, and he'd been injured, and he would spend a lot of time alone, just kind of abusing over what was going on. He decided to get it, to start a new branch of the Catholic Church. They were to be like the special forces in the Catholic Church.
Kind of a military force.
Yeah, almost a military force. And they were the great missionaries of the Catholic Church, they were the ones who went from country to country. And they, they suffered, you know, they, there were many martyrs among them. But their intent and purpose was to bring the world under total, complete loyalty and allegiance to the Catholic Church, namely to the Pope, okay? And they spared no effort, uh, and no attempt was considered illegal for them to do. A lot of people suffered persecution and torment because of the Jesuits in the Catholic Church. Again, they were the shock troops, the special forces in the Catholic Church, alright? Eyes like the eyes of a man. They used education, because Catholic education, they did all kinds of the things to try to persuade children, young people, of the truth of the Catholic Church. And then, they were the special forces, like I said. That's the fifth point, eyes like a man. Sixth point, spoke pompous or great words against the Most High. Pompous words. This is the power the Apostle Paul spoke of in Second Thessalonians two verse four. "He sits as God in the temple of God, showing himself that he is God." Who would dare do that? You know, if someone came up to you and says, "I'm God, you can listen to me, you better obey me." Hopefully, you turn your back on that individual right away and walk away, or run away, right? Well, here's some of their own statements, and these are historical. And these reflect the actual belief of the Catholic system, especially in the Middle Ages. Now, they've kind of softened up on that a little bit. There was an event in nineteen sixty-three called Vatican II, where they started putting on a better front to the world, okay? Because they realized that this authoritarian system wasn't working very well for them. Well, here's what it says, "Praepia biblio teka volumes six, page twenty-six. The Pope is of so great dignity and so exalted, that he is not a mere man, but as it were God, and a vicar of God." Now, who would make such a claim for themselves, right? Who would claim that a human being seated on a throne, there in the city of Rome, or carried about, you know, by servants, on his throne, decked out in all kinds of fanciful materials, a far cry from how Jesus was dressed, a far cry from the poverty that our Lord suffered through? But the Popes down through the ages, and you read some of this, history of some of these Popes, and it was outrageous. You had Popes that, you know, they, they claimed to believe in celibacy, but a lot of them produced kids, you know, as Popes. You know, a lot of them did things that you would, you know, that you would expect that would be condemned by God and by man. But, then, "We the Popes hold on this earth the place of God Almighty, the great encyclical letter of Pope Leo XIII," from nineteen oh-three, okay? They made all kinds of audacious claims about themselves. They believed that God, through Jesus Christ, had given them an authority above and beyond kings, presidents, prelates, above everybody. Where the Pope, we are taking the place of God Almighty himself. Now, we can shudder at such a claim. You know, no human being can take the place of God Almighty, right? And yet, at their, I've attended masses before, you know, with people, I don't participate. But the belief is that when the priest takes this little wafer of, of a bread, and he's mumbles a few words, sometimes in Latin, sometimes in English, he mumbles a few words and this bread becomes the literal blood and body of Jesus, okay? And you're wondering, how can such a thing happen? Mumble a few words and suddenly you're holding Jesus in your hand, you know? And it was the same with the grape juice, with the wine, you know? Mutter a few words, you know, bless this, hold it up in the air, this becomes the literal blood, literal body of Jesus, okay? They call it the real presence. And I've debated some people on this, but now, Jesus says, "This dude, remembrance of me." It's a memory, it's not a literal blood body, okay? But, they claim to have that authority. "For thou, the Pope, art the shepherd, thou art the physician, thou art the director, thou art the husbandman. Finally, thou art another God on earth." These are from their own statements, okay? These aren't something that Protestants came up with to cast dispersals upon the papacy. These are from their own statements. They make claims, they make prerogatives that belong to God alone, okay? What's one prerogative that belongs to God alone? Now, if I do harm to you, I can ask you forgiveness, you forgive me, okay? If I sin against God, you can't, you can't forgive that, only God can forgive that, right? And yet, for centuries, if a person felt that they had sinned, they go into this booth where a priest listens to all the dirty linen in their laundry, and they confess it, one after another after another, okay? So, they're, they're subscribing to the priest, a priest, another human being like ourselves, the capability of forgiving sins, okay? Now, we would call that blasphemy, and it is, okay? So, that's what the statements, that's what the Catholic Church claims for itself, for its Popes, okay? So, when it's talking about speaking pompous words, what's pompous mean? Bold, arrogant, prideful, okay, speaking these words. That's the sixth point. Seventh point, it will persecute the saints. Historians tell us that the papal power is responsible for the death of millions of people. And that's been verified again and again and again. Millions of people down to the Middle Ages. For example, the following history, books detail the persecution known as the Spanish Inquisition, the persecution of the Walensian people and Dutch people, and the Saint Bartholomew's Day persecution, I could mention the Albatenses. Anybody there in the Middle Ages that didn't subscribe to the teaching of what they called the Holy Mother Church, the Catholic Church, was subject not just to death, but often to horrible torture, persecution, torment, torture. And if you've seen pictures of some of the torture chambers used there in the Inquisition, it'll make you shudder down your spine. How could a human being do that to another human being? They thought they were doing God's will. Torturing people to death, trying to get a confession out of them. If you owned a Bible, which was especially rare in those days, but if you happened to have possession of one, you could be tortured to death. If you didn't believe one of the teachings of the papal system during that time, then you would be tortured and tortured until you finally submitted to the torture and said, "Okay, okay, I believe." You know, well, that's no way, you know, contrast to the way that Jesus led people. Jesus the weak and mild, the gentle shepherd. Contrast the papal system to the church that Jesus intended to leave behind.
He gave you the option.
What?
Jesus gave you that option.
Yeah, he never forced against the will. He never, never threatens persecution, never threatens death, you know, imprisonment. But the papal system that was set up, and it was largely in because of people's ignorance, superstition reigned supreme. And so, during the Middle Ages and beyond, up until seventeen ninety-eight, you know, the papal power held supremacy and persecuted people that disagreed. That's why we have historical events like the Reformation. But at the same time, you have people, even during their Reformation, that paid for their lives, with their lives, for their adherence to the Bible as the word of God, and not the papal system, not the papal system.
Very rational, honest, if I say that, they were saving them, their souls for eternity.
Yeah.
Torture them as to say, you know, confessing whatever they assumed sins that they had.
And some of their key founders, you know, now, Catholics, they hold Augustine in high regard. And he said some things that were right. And so did Jerome, and so did Thomas Aquinas, you know, some of the key doctors of the church, they call them. But they had writings that condoned the persecution of people, because we're trying to save people. Well, if you read a story about the Inquisition, for example, you know, they would torture people, and I think they got off on torturing people, I think that they were having some kind of a sadistic enjoyment about it, you know? But that was all condoned under the papal system, because that's how they exercised their authority and their power. Now, that's not the saying, even like today, that there weren't good people, good Catholic people. Now, that's not to say, even like today, that there weren't good people, good Catholic people. There were monasteries that took in the sick. There were monks that ministered to people, they fed the hungry, they did some good things, you know? That's not to say, they're always bad about it. But when you compare that to the evil that was accomplished, all in the name of, of maintaining the authority and the power of a Pope in the Catholic Church, you know, it's just hard to believe that that could happen. Okay? So they persecuted the saints. And he lists a number of, of, uh, books, materials that you could read on that if your stomach can stand it. History of the Reformation, The Great Controversy, good book to read on that. Fox's Book of Martyrs, Stories of the Reformation in England and Scotland. Here I Stand, I've been reading this book lately. Here I Stand, The Life of Martin Luther. Martin Luther managed to escape death by a threat. You know, he lived out his days. But he was under threat of death, uh, for much of his life. He had to be in hiding for part of it, you know? But many other people like John Huss and, uh, Tyndale, people like that, they paid for their Christian experience by death. Now, William Tyndale was a man, he was what today we would call a Puritan. But he was the first one to translate the Bible into the English language based on the original Greek and Hebrew. Okay? A man named John Wycliffe had translated the Bible into English, but it was based on the Latin Vulgate, which was the standard Bible among the, the Catholic Church at the time. And it had some, some strong, powerful, bad errors in that translation. John Wycliffe believed that every man, every woman should have the right to read the Bible for themselves. And so he spent much of his life translating the Bible into the English language. While in the process, the authorities wanted to put him to death. They didn't want him doing this. So he fled out to the continent of Europe, he'd go one place, escaping just by, by error, you know, from persecution, people trying to arrest him. Finally, he was captured, he was strangled and burned at the stake. For no other reason than translating the Bible into the English language. Okay? Uh, there's many other horrible examples that we could talk about. Men and women who suffered because of their faith in Jesus. Now, another part of this tragedy is that the Catholic Church had established the idea, established the environment of persecution. But even after the Catholic Church was, uh, was sent packing out of Great Britain, well, with Henry the Eighth, they still persecuted. Now, it's the Protestants persecuting Protestants. Okay? It's not just all Catholics who are doing persecution. Protestants persecuting Protestants. The Puritans, they crossed the ocean into America, they established their settlements, and they continue to persecute people that disagree with them. It all started with the Catholic System though. It all started with the Papal System, who believed they were called upon by God to put to death, often under horrible persecution. They were called by God to persecute anybody who disagreed with their view of religion. Okay? So, I encourage you to read The Great Controversy, the book, the books you can get from the library shelf, History of the Reformation, uh, but you may not be able to stomach everything that you read because it was pretty horrific stuff, okay? Eighth point, I turn the page. He will think to change times and laws. Alright? Now, this comes from, uh, the twenty-fourth verse of Daniel. I'm sorry, the twenty-fifth verse. Daniel seven. He will speak pompous words against the most high, he will persecute the saints of the most high. He will intend or think to change times and laws, then the saints shall be given into his hand for a time, time, half a time. Okay? Change times and law. What law? What times? What law has to do with time?
The fourth commandment.
Fourth commandment. Remember the seventh. By the way, it didn't say remember a Sabbath day. I've told the congregation here a couple of times where I went to a church up in Owensboro one time. It was a brand new congregation, it was just meeting for the first few times. And I walked in there and in the front of the church, on the screen, was the big letters, the Sabbath. The sermon today is going to be about the Sabbath. I thought, oh, great, I'm in the right place, you know, and I had my Bible with me, you know? And I go and I settled down and the preacher preached a good sermon about the Sabbath. Wonderful sermon about the importance of keeping the Sabbath. Until in the end, he says, God wants you to pick a day of the week and make it your Sabbath. I was ready to throw something at this guy. It didn't say remember a Sabbath day and make it holy, it said remember the Sabbath day, the one that God himself made holy. You can't make anything holy, only God can make something holy, right? I, I can pick a day for a day off. I can, I can pick a holiday, I can pick a day for personal use or whatever, you know? I can't make it holy. Only God can make it holy. And he made the Sabbath day holy. And so you have this institution, this agency, that claims religious authority and secular authority. You have this agency that's endorsing its, its claims by persecuting anyone who disagrees with their claims. And one of the things they do is they claim the right to actually change the day that God has established as worship and to change it to Sunday. Okay? That sounds pretty audacious. God is the one who predetermines the events of life. Do every, for everything during the season, the time, and every purpose under heaven. Concerning the changing of times, the little horn, that's the Catholic System, attempted to change the course of history by exercising the prerogative of God to set up kings and take them down. The power that makes laws and changes them is the one that is in control. That's why the scripture says, there is one law giver who is able to save and destroy. James four twelve. The papacy claims this prerogative, which belongs only to God. It claims that he can modify divine law since his power is not, is not of man, but of God. And he acts in the place of God upon earth with the fullest power of binding and losing his sheep. And so comparing the Ten Commandments and the Catholic Catechism with scripture, excuse me, reflects the fact that the papacy has exercised that prerogative. The second commandment in Exodus twenty, verses four to six, which states, thou shalt not make for thyself a carved image, any likeness of anything that is in heaven above or that is on earth below, or that is in the waters under the earth, you shall not bow down to them or serve them, has been removed. God's third, third commandment became her second, and his fourth commandment became her third. So they actually changed the, the structure of the Ten Commandments, okay, in their catechisms. Now, if you look at a Catholic Bible, you know, may not reflect this change, but the official Catholic catechism, that's their teaching materials. Okay, they've, they've initiated this change. So, Ten Commandments, the fourth commandment became the third. And the fourth commandment is an example of changing both times and laws, a seventh day Sabbath, which God blessed, hallowed, and sanctified. Okay? Exodus, uh, Genesis twenty, verse one to three, Exodus twenty, verse eight to eleven, was done away with by the Catholic Church. They replaced God's seventh day Sabbath, Bible Sabbath, with Sunday, the first day of the week, a day whose very name was given to it by its pagan worshippers of the sun.
Genesis two.
That, what did I say, Genesis one? Okay, I got, it's Exodus twenty, Genesis two, gotcha. Thank you for that correction. Now, there's a lot of information we could bog down with here. Because the fact of the matter is, there were some people who started observing Sunday very early on, before the Catholic Church even came into existence. And they used different reasonings, what they didn't use was, and thus saith the Lord. You know, I like the phrase, thus saith the Lord, you know, if the Lord calls for it, that's what we are to obey. And there were some people who started observing Sunday very early on. And the reason was, well, there was a number of reasons. One was, they didn't, the early Christian church, after that, the Jews became odious to the Romans. You know, about the time that the, the Jewish temple was destroyed, the AD seventy, it became, uh, uh, not real comfortable to associate with the Jews. And one of the things that they associated with Jews was the Sabbath. And so, early on, some Christians started observing Sunday. In fact, a lot of Christians started observing Sabbath and Sunday. But there, in the process of time, the Sabbath became more and more of a fast day. You know, a day where we're kind of gloomy and a day where we're just kind of doing our, our obligation. And Sunday became a day of celebration. Why? Well, the Lord was risen on Sunday. Okay? And so, Sunday observance became more or less rather prevalent even before the Catholic Church came into existence. Now, by three thirty-one A.D., there was an emperor named Constantine, who recognized, now that Christianity was a legal religion, he recognized there was still a lot of division in the Christian Church. And then a lot of them were observing Sabbath and, but even more of them were observing Sunday in honor of the sun. Okay? That was the obvious ob- object of worship in those days, you know, worship the sun on Sunday. Alright? And so he passed a decree in three thirty-one, three twenty-one A.D., you know, the first official political, uh, decree about Sunday observance. And it simply had to do with people abstaining from work on, on Sunday. Okay, take the day off. It was in five thirty-eight, I think it was the Third Council of Orleans, that the Papal System passed its first religious decree about keeping this, keeping Sunday. Okay? Five thirty-eight, why do we recognize that date? That's when the Ostrogoths were defeated, the Catholic System began to ascend in, in, in power and authority. And one of the things that they used to demonstrate their authority, we have the authority under Jesus Christ to change the day of observance from Sabbath to Sunday. And those who continued to keep the Sabbath became more and more of a minority, and they were persecuted down through the ages. But the Catholic Church, they called it their mark of authority to change the day of worship. Mark of authority. And this became a, a conflict even during the Reformation. Now, the Catholic Church, you know, during the Reformation, you had the Protestants who were claiming their only authority was the Bible, the word of God. And so the Catholics would say, okay, you say you believe in the Bible as the only authority. Why do you continue to, to observe Sunday instead of the Sabbath that the Bible calls for? And the Protestants didn't have a good answer. It was embarrassing to them. They weren't ready to step out and actually start keeping the Sabbath, but they didn't have a good answer. There was a, um, a counter-Reformation that the Catholic Church brought it to be, uh, you know, about fifteen forty-five or so. And they taught, it was, it was a time of, uh, cleaning up the Catholic Church, you know, doing away with some of the abuses and things. But one of the issues that was brought up, you know, okay, you Protestants? You claim the authority of the Bible and the Bible only? Why do you observe the day that the Catholic Church establishes the day of worship instead of the Sabbath day that the Bible consistently enjoys us to do? And again, the Ca- the Protestants got a little embarrassed. They didn't have a good answer to that. And it's been the same ever since that. Protestants who observe Sunday don't have a good answer why they observe Sunday. Well, it's tradition. Okay? Well, it's what my parents and grandparents have always done. I've always gone to a church where we, we meet on Sunday morning. It just seems like the thing to do, you know? But then, what does the Bible teach? Remember the Sabbath day, to keep it holy. God has blessed, he has authorized the observance of the Sabbath day as a memorial to his creation. And it's right there in the heart of the Ten Commandments, remember the Sabbath day, to keep it holy. And so, the Catholic Church, uh, symbolized by this beast. Okay, it's a persecuting power. It speaks pompous words, claims all kinds of prerogatives and powers that, that are given only to God. Alright? And it thinks it's going to change the times and laws. It's going to attempt to change the very commandment of God. It's going to attempt to change that part of the commandments related to time that reminds us, that perpetual reminder that God has created us. Amen? Amen?
It says, remember the Sabbath day. God put that word there for, he knew.
The commandment that God says remember is the one most Christians choose to forget.
Yes.
You ever notice that? Kind of ironic, isn't it? Remember it means don't forget, right? Yeah. Okay, um. The fourth commandment, now the paragraph at the bottom, example of changing both times and laws, seventh day Sabbath, which God blessed, hallowed, and sanctified, done away with by the Catholic Church. They're the ones who made the official statements, uh, I think it was the Third Council of Orleans, five thirty-eight. You know? We have the right to change the law of God. In fact, they claim that it's even their mark of authority. How do we know? How do we know the Catholic Church is the proper church? How do we know it's God's true church? Because with his, his authority, we have changed the day of observance from Sabbath to Sunday. I disagree with that claim, strongly disagree. Well, the papacy even admits this so-called change, for God alone can truly change his law, was its accomplishment, and there is no scriptural authority for this change. They make no bones about it, you know? If you talk to a Catholic historian, you know, sir, why, why do we, why do we observe Sunday? What does the Bible say? Well, the Bible doesn't say observe Sunday, but we have changed the day, the Catholic Church. Okay? Okay, let's, then the ninth point, that's the last point. It would continue on for time, times, and half a time. Now, a time is used in Bible prophecy at times to represent a year. You'll think of one time, the earth goes around the sun. Times is two times. And half a time is half a year. Okay? And biblically, given the fact that a biblical year was three hundred and sixty days long, biblically, this adds up to, uh, twelve hundred and sixty. Now, it's been demonstrated, and you know, many scholars recognize this fact, that in Bible prophecy, a day is often symbolic of a year. Okay? In Ezekiel chapter four, for example, he's told to, uh, do certain things based upon a day being for a year. And so it's a standard, uh, biblical principle. In fact, I was reading a book by William Shea, he was an Adventist scholar, he's passed away since then. And it's a book on Bible interpretation. And for anybody who questions the principle of a day equaling year in Bible prophecy, read that book. When you get about a third of the way through, through the book, you'll say, okay, okay, I agree, he's right. You know? You know, it, it's a biblical principle, it's a sound biblical principle. In Bible prophecy, a day often represents a year. And so when we're talking about time, times, dividing of times, and by the way, the same time period is mentioned seven times between Daniel and Revelation. Okay? Sometimes it's called twelve hundred and sixty days, sometimes it's called, uh, three, three and a half months. I think that's what it's called. But it's, u- uses different terminology, but it's all the same time period. And that's talking about the time that the Catholic System reigned in authority, that it overcame the, the, the powers and authorities of all the nations under it. And it ruled on the basis of superstition and people not knowing their Bibles. When people like Martin Luther and John Wesley and the other reformers began to read their Bibles, they realized one essential truth out of it all. Martin Luther was the great reformer. And he had gone to Rome on a trip, on a business trip. And while he was in Rome, he was looking around at all the monks and the priests and so-called saints. And he was observing all the immorality and all the, the stuff that they got involved in. And he was mortified as he saw the condition of the ministry, the so-called godly priests and monks there in the Catholic Church. And there was a place in Rome where it was believed that you could earn salvation by saying, um, hail, not hail Marys, but, uh, holy father. Okay? It was called Peter's Stairwell, staircase. It was believed this was the staircase in Pilate's place, Pilate's, uh, tech, tech, temple where, uh,
His court.
His court. I'm stumbling all over myself, oh, sorry about that. But in Pilate's court, where Jesus had gone up these steps. And to earn salvation in behalf, not only of yourself, but of other people. You go up this and you climb one step at a time, twenty-eight steps, and each step you go up, you say another holy father.
Our father.
What? Our father. Yeah, you say another, our father. Okay? And each step, each time you do that, you spend a little bit less time in purgatory and hopefully get some of your parents and grandparents out of purgatory one, one step a little sooner. He gets to the top of that, now by this time, he's not reading his Bible. By this time, he began to understand something about how salvation is acquired. And he gets to the top and the question just hits him in, in the mind, are these things really so? And he remembers that scripture verse in, in Romans one that says, the just shall live by faith. And the great doctrine, this is the key doctrine that separates Catholicism and, and, and Protestantism, the just shall live by faith, is called justification by faith. Okay? Now, what does that mean when you unpack that concept? It means that it's through faith in Jesus Christ, it's through our acceptance of him, it's through a friendship with him, it's through trust with him that we are saved. It's not through our good works, it's not through our best efforts, it's not through climbing Pilate's staircase, it's not through, you know, doing hail Marys and our fathers and all the other things that Catholics have been for centuries taught to do, in order, you know, counting rosary beads, all the things that Catholics do in, in efforts to gain the, the, the blessing of God. But it's through a simple faith relationship with Jesus Christ. And when Martin Luther discovered this, the Reformation began. And one day, there in Wittenberg, I got to stand next to that door, Wittenberg, Germany, where he, he was a teacher. And he nailed his ninety-five theses on the wall, on the, of the door of that church. And the Reformation began. Okay? Because the just will live by faith, justified, treated, be treated justified, never sent. Okay? An incredible exchange, Christ's life, Christ's goodness, Christ's righteousness for my sinfulness. Christ's robe of righteousness put upon the sinful person. Because this person has trusted in Jesus as a salvation, not in the works of the church, not in the superstitious things, not in the, the, all, all the things that they were called out to do, the pilgrimages and, uh, indulgences and all the things. But faith in Jesus Christ, Luther finally discovered that truth. And when that truth was shared, And when that truth was shared, the Catholic Church began to crumble, and the Protestant movement began. And so, time, times, and half a times. The beginning of this time, times, and half a time, five thirty-eight. When the last of the major enemies of the Catholic Church was shoved aside, was pushed aside. And now the Catholicism began to rise to the top, to its ascendancy. Then in seventeen ninety-eight, and there's a lot of history, you know, this is kind of the nutshell version, gross nutshell, in fact. A lot of history takes place here, but in seventeen ninety-eight. Uh, this is a time when Napoleon was on the rise, he was conquering country after country. And one of his key generals, a man named General Berthier, marches into the Vatican, takes the Pope captive. And the intention was to destroy this Catholic Church of all religion, really, forever, okay? That was the intention. That we have no more use for the Catholic Church. Now, you got to understand how the abuse of its authority, the abuse of power had been taking place up to that time. All during the Middle Ages, you know, people were starving, people were going hungry, but not the priests, not the monks. They were doing quite well. They were under the blessing of the state, and they had the state, the the king and the queen, you know, and 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 they were in collusion, cahoots with the Catholic Church. And the Pope was doing wonderfully well, and the people were starving. And so, at that time, the French Revolution, which was a major event in world history, a lot of implication of the French Revolution. But one of the implications was, when Napoleon became emperor, well, before he was officially emperor. But Berthier, his general, came in and conquered the the papal system. And the idea was to destroy it once and for all. Now, did it stay destroyed forever? Well, for many decades, it was no longer a major player in European history, okay? It was pretty subservient, and just, they were just doing the best they could to survive during this time period. But Revelation thirteen says, it's going to receive a deadly wound, but this deadly wound would be healed. Okay, so it's gaining ascendancy again, okay? Um, what he talks about, let's see. Well, that's the last page that I have, but but the point being, that the prophecy of Daniel seven pinpoints who this being is, this agency, this institution that comes out of the Roman Empire. Now, it's not about teaching people that we shouldn't like Roman Catholics, please, don't misunderstand that. And it's not about believing that they're all going to be lost and all Christians, all Protestants are going to be saved, it's nothing like that. But the Bible spends a lot of time, and that's why I'm spending time on this, it spends a lot of time pinpointing the Catholic system, the papal system, let's call it. Because it's a major portion of biblical prophecy. I mean, we'll get back into it in other parts of Daniel, Revelation talks quite a bit about the papal system, okay? It also talks about the daughters, it's called the daughters, that come out of this papal system. Okay, representing apostate Protestantism. Okay, so not, not all is well in the Protestant system either. We're not going to spend our whole time talking about the Catholic Church, you know, that's not the point of this. But, we need to understand that the church that Jesus Christ had left on this earth, when they got united with the state. They began to use the power of the state to enforce its authority, its decrees. And church and state united is always a bad combination. And so many people suffered because of the the power institution of the Catholic Church, represented by this beast. That started off in a pagan form, but became a papal form. And the 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 horn that came out of the center of these ten kingdoms represented the papacy, okay? Happy Saturday night, everybody, let's have prayer.
Thank you.
Thank you Heavenly Father for your blessings, thank you for your love, thank you for the kindness that you extend to each one of us. Lord, we don't want to just talk about one religion in the world, we want to talk about Jesus and how he's so, so wonderful and so kind. But Lord, sometimes we have to let prophecy take us where it leads us. And so, Lord, we just ask that you continue to guide us through this study of Daniel. Bring us back together tomorrow night if we go on to the next chapter, chapter eight. We thank you, Lord, we love you, take us safely home, we pray, in Jesus's name, amen. Thank you, folks, for coming out tonight.